We'll call together the regular meeting at the Common Council for Thursday, November the 12th, 2015. The invocation will be Councilman Papella and the Pledge of Legions by Councilman Ices.
Fire hets, please. Oh heavenly Father, let us take this opportunity once again to thank thee for all the many blessings you bestowed on each and every one of us and our loved ones. We also ask Father that you continue to bless and guide and watch over our military personnel that have served in the past and currently serve, especially those serving overseas and their loved ones back home. We also ask Father that you reach down and help the young people of this world that don't have the blessings that many of us have. Maybe an aunt, an uncle, a minister, a teacher can grab a hold of them, help them, point them down the right way. We also ask Father that you continue to watch over all of our police and fire and our city employees as they continue to perform great jobs for this city. We ask all these things in your name, the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the roll. Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Present.
Councilman Willis. Councilman Dixon.
I'm here.
Councilman Bibbs.
Here.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Jones. Councilman Ices.
Present.
President Davis. Here. We'll have the minutes to be approved.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to approve the minutes for the regular meeting October the 8th, 2015.
Second.
Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Ices.
Yes.
President Davis. Yes, the minutes have been approved. We'll have communications now.
Madam President, members of the City Council, you have in front of you a update of the monthly economic development report, Projects 1, and where those projects are coming from. I also want to pass around to you something that the Economic Development Department is doing. It is a shop local passport. We've already had several of those come back, people going to the local shops and getting them stamped and bringing them back to get them stamped here at City Hall. And also the Hire Anderson program that's out there on the City of Anderson website. I'll pass some magnets around for you. And anyone that accesses the City of Anderson website can go to that Chief Anderson button and they can input their contact information, or if they have a resume, upload it. And that goes out to all of our new businesses and our local businesses, as well as all of the headhunters in the area. So, any questions regarding the report? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. We'll now have a public hearing. Resolution 2115. Confirmatory resolution designate an economic revitalization area for the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Michael Frishorn. No, you're going to do it, all right. Tony.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm Tony Postherd. I'm the Director of Light and Power. And this is the solar project near the airport that we introduced last month. And to give a short presentation is Jack Alvey from Indiana Municipal Power Agency.
Welcome.
Hey, good evening, and then thank you for allowing us to come back again tonight. This is a similar information that we talked about last month, but these are kind of the highlights for what we want to do at our proposed solar park here in Anderson. So, why did IMPA choose solar? And we are looking at this, our, we have a power supply portfolio, so it's made up of different fuel types such as coal, natural gas, nuclear, and wind. And we've started to move into diversifying that portfolio with some more renewables, which solar, the costs have come down for solar, and solar is starting to make sense for us to add to our portfolio. So with that, it helps us to be more of an environmental steward. As you see more and more environmental regulations that are coming down the line, it'll help us to comply with those. It also is going to give us a stable price resource. We build these, we build these solar parks, so there's really no fuel cost, the sun's free. It's the construction cost, and then it's a stable throughout the rest of the life of the, of the plant. And then this also gives our members, which we supply 60 municipalities in Indiana, actually 59 in Indiana and one in Ohio. It gives them economic development opportunities, kind of a showpiece in the community, an educational tool for the schools. And so, some of the benefits to the members, it puts this local renewable energy in your, in your town. And I went over the stable cost generation already, but it also will provide some revenue in the form of payment in lieu of taxes. And for this five-megawatt site, the estimate's about $60,000 a year that we'll pay for the personal property piece. So, this is what we've done. We started our program in 2013 where we, our Board of Commissioners approved three one-megawatt sites, and we built those in 2014 in Richmond and Frankton and Rensselaer. Then in 2015, we just wrapped up our final sites within the last couple of weeks. And you can see that we put in sites at Tel City, Peru, Crawfordsville, Pendleton, Argos, and Bainbridge. And right now, we're working on the development of our 2016 projects, which Anderson is one of four that I'm looking at right now. Anderson will be the biggest in 2016, and it would also be our biggest of the 13 that we'll have in place at the end of 2016. So, a little bit of detail on this site, it'll be 19,000 solar panels. We'll have about 36, 35 acres under the panels for the land that it takes up, and it'll take us about four to five months to build, once we actually get out into the, into the dirt to start construction. This is just a little bit more, five megawatts. We expect to be done by the end of the summer, assuming that we'll be able to get out in the mid-spring, mid to late springtime period. The, the location is State Road 32 and Range Line Road, which is at the airport, on land that, that the community proposed to us, which would be, it'd be a good site. I think that it's not being used, it's being used maybe for farm ground, but you can't really develop it, you can't build buildings near the airport. So, this is, this is a perfect place really for this low-lying structure. We have, we use our engineering services corp, called IMPA Service Corporation, to do the design. We have a company that does the day-to-day construction management for us called Brant Construction, they're out of Indianapolis. This is just a breakdown of the costs. The overall cost is about $9.5 million. I believe in the, in the documentation for the tax abatement request, it was $9.1 million. That's because some of the items don't really fall into that category of personal property. But the, the big pieces you can see are the panels, which is about a little bit less than half of the cost. The racking, that's the posts that get driven into the ground. And then the inverters, which are the devices that change the DC power, which is what's produced on the solar panels, produce, changes those over to AC so that then we can send it into your distribution system. This is just a example. This is the Peru site that we put online this summer. It's a three-megawatt site. It's really a nice-looking site. We put this on top of Peru's Aquifer, their water company had that land, they couldn't put anything else out there. They can't, you can't put any chemicals on the ground out there, but we could drive the posts and put a solar park there. So it's a really good use of that land, so it's not just going to sit there doing nothing. So, tonight I'd like to ask or request this abatement for your consideration. IMPA's nonprofit organization, state agency, if, quasi-state agency. We do pay payment in lieu of taxes on the property that, that we have, and it's the 10-year abatement request that is in front of you this, tonight. Once again, the benefits to Anderson for this project is the local renewable energy. And Anderson's our largest member, so this gives you a contribution to, to your wholesale power supply or provider to give us a stable cost resource that is part of our overall portfolio, which makes up what our power rates are. And then, and really this is just forward-thinking, we're kind of out in front of it. You, you see a lot of solar, but we probably have as much experience or more than anyone right now in Indiana putting in solar. And then the community education and involvement opportunities. And with that, I thank you, and if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be glad to.
It sounds terrific. Anyone in the audience wish to address, this is different, different we've had.
Just one real quick question. Ken Delvis, Steve Harrow-Bolton. Once this is up and running, what's the projected life of the park?
Five years.
You could talk to maybe three different people and get three different answers. The solar panels, they have a 25-year warranty, but the, the actual life, we're, we're expecting 30 to 40-year life for the actual usage time for the equipment.
Anyone else in the audience have a question? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now go into ordinances previously and introduced for first and second reading.
Madam President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 2815 for its third and final reading, please.
Second.
Ordinance 28-15, and Ordinance amending Ordinance Number 1141, Ordinance Number 2439 of the City of Anderson's Code of Ordinances, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change of zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
I'm Micah Mitchell, Senior Zoning Administrator. And this is a, a zone map change that we've had before you before, as a result of a zoning issue with the 312 Church Drive that came up back in the wintertime. Board of Zoning Appeals requested that that zone be changed. We opted for an I-1 zone because it was a good blend of everything that's around. We have residential up here, some business, industrial surrounding it. That zone is an I-2, and there are several residences in it that are, they're lawfully non-conforming because the city zoned over it. But anytime anything comes up, like back in the fall, then the residents are forced to come to the Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, spend their money to come and ask for permission. So what we, we opted for an I-1 zone, we sent out a letter, asked the residents for their input. Some residents are here that are in support of it. If the board has any, or the council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any council member have a question? Anyone in the audience?
Call for a question.
Question, then call them. Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Ices.
Yes.
President Davis. Yes. 28-15 has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor.
Madam President, I'd like to bring forth City Ordinance 30-15 for the third and final vote, please.
Second.
Ordinance 30-15, and Ordinance amending ordinances 35-82, 54-83, 12-85, 25-03, and 32-09, as previously amended. Chapter 77 and Chapter 78 of the City of Anderson Code of Ordinances, changing traffic schedules relating to speed limits and parking schedules on certain streets within the City of Anderson. Michael Spire.
Madam President, members of the council. The ordinance before you addresses the speed limit in Paramount Springs addition, and also two-hour parking in the downtown area. I know the last time Mr. Ices asked the approximate number of parking spaces downtown, it's almost 600 parking spaces downtown. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any council member?
Madam President. Micah, is that 600, is that free parking spaces, or does that include the garage and...?
No, that's free parking spaces, that's on the street.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Spire's after this ordinance is up and down. How long will it take to implement the signs?
We'll have to have the Street Department put up signs. It'll take a while for them to get everything changed over.
Okay.
It's quite a few signs.
Anyone in the audience would like to address the downtown parking that's going to go from, what, Mike, one hour to two hours?
Some of it's 30 minutes, some of it's one hour, some of it's hour and a half. Like I say, it's to be consistent and provide an opportunity for additional time.
You shouldn't have.
It's all going to be two hours.
You shouldn't have to worry about eating your dinner in a hurry. If you're...
Call for a question.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. What type of manual or digital way will you judge those two hours, monitor those two hours?
They've got it.
I don't do any monitoring of two hours. That would be the Police Department would have to monitor.
Police Department does.
Okay. What did, what did the chief say he was going to use? Do you remember?
I believe it was a meter person.
Yeah.
Recently.
I've seen them, they're in a little cart.
Would they put marking on the tires or...?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Is that what they do?
Chalk tires.
Okay.
Same thing.
She has?
Yeah, Mr. has already got that little cart with the...
That marking on the tires is old school.
Yeah, I don't think that's quite how they do it, but then I don't know how they do it, so...
Yeah, I watched the Harrow-Bolton, he...
Harrow-Bolton, he should know how they...
Well, I, the only reason I know is because I saw her doing it the other day.
Okay, and I seen the little card out the other day, too.
She is hired, she was out working the other day. She was marking the tires with chalk, and then she writes down the license number of where they're parked, and I guess she comes back and checks to see if they've been moved.
With all this high technology, I would have thought it been different.
Yeah, I saw you running back to your automobile.
Anyone else in the audience? Oh, sorry.
Hello, Council. My name's Levi Rinker. I work for this wonderful City of Anderson. I've got a informal survey of what I did when I first came into this position, collected people's opinions on a few different issues. This one's all pertaining to parking, asking, I spin out about 600 surveys of the ones that came back. We've got 180 in total. You can see different issues from whether or not their work provides free or subsidized parking for them, if sports, two-hour parking, the time they find an empty spot, their preference on whether or not they, they think people stay in that position longer than the posted time, if the rules and signs are clear, if enforcement is sufficient, if they're willing to pay for metered parking, if they think employees use too much parking spaces, and if they think there's enough monthly parking available, if they use the parking garage, where do they typically park, and their willingness to walk according to how many blocks. It's not representative of everyone downtown, it was just those 180 people that were willing enough to participate in the survey and give back that information. But you can see that those that support the two-hour parking come out to about a 62%. Those that are not in favor, 29%, and those that didn't answer a 9% question. I've got letters from Deb Stapleton from the Fine Arts Center, who can't be here tonight, but she had wanted me to show you her opinion. I think she had stated last month during the time that her main concern was the Saturday hours and how that they do programming, and she's often in times having to console her clients that they're not ticketing during that, it's only the Monday through Friday traffic. And ask that, that be written into the ordinance and those signs be noted as well. One hour's just not enough time for them to do art classes. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Anyone, any council member asked would like to ask him a question? Anyone in the audience?
Art, call for the question.
Question, then call them.
Thank you.
Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Ices.
Yes.
President Davis. Yes. Ordinance 30-15 has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor. We now have introductions of new, oh, if the ordinance has been read one time.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to have Ordinance 29-15 be given its reading, and then upon that, I am prepared to make an amendment to that ordinance.
Madam President, I second that, please.
Ordinance 29-15, and an ordinance of the City of Anderson amending Chapter 91 Governing Animal Control Within the Municipal Limits of the City.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 29-15, excuse me, be amended to delete everything following the title, Ordinance 29-15, and ordinance of the City of Anderson amending Chapter 91 Governing Animal Control Within the Municipal Limits of the City, and insert instead the new document entitled Ordinance 29-15 as amended, etc., which document is now incorporated herein as if set out in its entirety. Amends to Ordinance 29-15 or set out in bold within the text. Period.
Madam President, I second that, please.
Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Ices.
Yes.
President Davis. Yes. Ordinance has been amended.
Madam President.
Madam President.
Yes.
May I have the floor, please?
Yes.
As I said the last meeting we had, we started on this, I don't know, September, October a year ago, Senator and myself and the great lady, where'd she go? There she is.
She's hiding from you.
My hero, my head coach. And had several meetings addressing the situation. I think everybody in the audience that was here last time heard how I feel about her and the animal shelter, and we keep tweaking it, okay? I said last time, you know, it's not perfect, we're going to get it perfect, and I hope you don't get mad at me. As long as she's happy, I'm happy. I really don't care what the rest of you think, to be honest with you, and I'm taking that from my heart, because without her, I think our animal shelter is down the tubes. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Senator Lannan, because once again, he's the one spending all the time writing this and so forth, so I should say, or Councilman Ices, if you wanted to add anything, I didn't want to take anything away from you, buddy. Okay, I'll shut up.
Thank you, Councilman Papella, members of the council. What you have in front of you now with the amended ordinance, it still has the provisions that you adopted last month in regards to the further classification as to mistreatment of animals, as far as a animal being left in an unattended vehicle when the conditions in the vehicle would constitute a health hazard to the animal, or being transported in the trunk of any vehicle. But you might remember that last month there became a discussion about should we have certain exceptions to the spay-neuter requirement of animals which are brought to the shelter or impounded by animal control. And there were suggestions that there should be some exceptions for things such as training service dogs, trained service dogs, I should say, show dogs, where there could be a presentation by a licensed veterinarian that it would not be in the animal's best medical interest to be sterilized. And then also a provision for an owner whose, whose animal had been impounded to apply for a breeding permit through the city. And those are the exceptions which are provided into the ordinance right now, or by virtue of the amendment that you adopted. I would say to the council, we probably need a further tweaking of this amendment because I caught belatedly the fact that we provided that the Clerk's Office would have some involvement in terms of the issuance of the breeding permit, and I think we've thought that over and believe that would be more appropriate for the City Controller's Office to have control over that, because there is a fee that's paid in that regards. And there may be some other things we need to look at. So, I would ask the council to give this one more reading. I know everyone's been patient in terms of this final adoption, but as Councilman Papella says, we want to get it right. And so I'd like to ask for consideration by the council, one more reading this evening. Allow me to address a couple of these tweaks that we still need to have for our third and final reading at the December meeting.
What's the council's wishes?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address this ordinance? Please come forward. Anybody wants to speak on this ordinance, please come forward. Or against it. State your name and address.
My name is Kelly Borgman, and I am from Pendleton. President Davis and Anderson City Council, I have come tonight to speak on behalf of your animal ordinances. My name is Kelly Borgman, and I am president and co-founder of Friends for Paws Animal Rescue out of Pendleton. I'm sure you're wondering why a Pendleton resident is coming to speak at your meeting. I would like to explain why your ordinances affect our, our organization. Four years ago, Angie and I started Friends for Paws. We work with our community and our police department. In that time, a number of things have changed in our community for the animals. We do not only, we not only have helped Pendleton Police, but have been called on by the county and Anderson Dispatch to help when animal control officers are not on duty. So your, your ordinances affect our organization when we are called on from time to time. We also have pulled dogs from the shelter when we are able to. Gandhi has said that the great, the greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated, and I do believe that it is, that is true. It is shocking to me when I drive through Anderson at the number of dogs and cats running around. A loose dog can cause a wreck or injury to an adult or worse, a child. In Pendleton, it is very rare now to see a dog running. Most animal attacks are from loose, unaltered animals. We have made tremendous changes in Pendleton. It took our community, board members, and police officials to make these changes. Our greatest accomplishment was this spring when our community police and our show dog breeders came together in support of a spay-neuter law. There is help out there for low-income families. We also now have a trap-neuter and return ordinance, which is if you feed an outside wildcat, you must fix it to stop the overpopulation of cats. One cat has the ability in seven years to produce 420,000 offspring. That is an insane amount of kittens running your community. I know these ordinances are scary, but I am so proud to come from my community, to know that animals' lives matter. Our community threw out their ordinances to rewrite them, and I would encourage you all to one day look through them and see what our community has done, and how much it has made our lives and our police officers' lives easier. I was once told a spay-neuter ordinance will put us out of business, and I made the choice to become a rescuer. My answer was I didn't choose this, it chose me. I looked at a pregnant pit bull dumped and all alone, and I knew at that moment Angie and I could make a change. And one day, I would love to be out of business because the animals would all be in loving homes and our job would be complete. Thank you for letting me speak tonight and taking your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll ask...
Call for a question.
Question, then call them. Well, it really hasn't gave, been given a second reading as amended.
Why don't you read it that way?
Ordinance 29-15 as amended, and ordinance of the City of Anderson amending Chapter 91 Governing Animal Control Within the Municipal Limits of the City. Now you can call for...
Call for the question.
Question. Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilman Dixon.
No.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Ices.
Yes.
President Davis. Yes. Ordinance 29-15 has passed the Anderson City Council in second reading. We'll now go into introduction of new ordinances. If any of you wish to leave, now is the time that you, well, just take five minutes to let you leave, because I'm sure you want to listen to the rest of boring.
Maybe they want to stick around, Donna.
Maybe they want to stay.
Hey, I took a shower, swear to God I did. I mean, really.
Yeah, look at that.
You're all right.
Kenny want to ask me a question?
It's all for betterment of the city. I'm ready for him. It really is. We're not done yet.
Bring his ass up here, I want to talk to him.
No, I guarantee you, I'll keep picking out, it's going up about six minutes.
Eric.
I'm something to do, really.
Well, it wasn't given a second reading as amended.
If you're standing, there's plenty of room up front now.
You got a question for me?
Later we would have had a message.
You got a question for...
You? Are you on a reset?
No.
Five minutes.
Let's move.
I'm sorry?
I don't like the part about the, uh, no, I don't care, I got, I got the...
I don't like the part about the, no, I don't care, I got the about the cats.
You're supposed to have one on the dogs, too, not just cats, have a license.
Everybody ain't got your money, Donald.
My cat stays in the house.
Yeah, then keep your cat in here.
We're ready, Donna.
I think I've already done this, but we'll do it again. Introduction of new ordinances.
Madam President, I'd like to introduce the council for its first reading, ordinance thirty-one dash fifteen, please.
Second.
Ordinance thirty-one dash fifteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-nine dash eighty-one and all amendments thereto, Chapter ninety-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Anderson and establishing policies for residential tax abatements within the City of Anderson.
Madam President?
Yes.
Members of the City Council, this is your annual vote as far as procedure for residential tax abatements. Something we do every year, November, December.
Six years.
Yep.
Six years.
Yep.
Any question from the council?
Call for the question.
Excellent.
Wait a minute, I haven't asked the audience. Anyone in the audience wish to address the residential tax abatement? All right.
Call for the question.
Call for the question. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Davis?
Yes, thirty-one fifteen is passed the Anderson City Council on its first reading.
Madam President, I'd like to introduce the council for its second reading, ordinance thirty-one dash fifteen, please.
Second.
Ordinance thirty-one dash fifteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-nine dash eighty-one and all amendments thereto, Chapter ninety-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Anderson and establishing policies for residential tax abatements within the City of Anderson. Anyone on the council have a question? Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Davis?
Yes. Thirty-one dash fifteen is passed the Anderson City Council on its second reading. You want to do three on this?
No, no, no.
I guess not.
Three. Oh, definitely.
Have to do that. Several months ago.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty-two fifteen for its first reading.
Second.
Ordinance thirty-two dash fifteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number eleven forty-one, ordinance number twenty-four thirty-nine, of the City of Anderson's Code of Ordinances, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change of zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
I could match all.
Yes. Good evening again. This is a petition is filed, or the address is sixty-three twenty-five South Madison Avenue, as just south of the Greystone Edition at Sixtieth and Madison. The petitioners are seeking to change this to an I-1 zone map, and again, it kind of blends in with what's around. They're wanting to be able to put a, you know, personal warehouse for business there. The petitioners are here, if you have any questions for them about their intent for the property.
Any question from any member on the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
What's in there now, Michael?
Right now, it is vacant. It did have in the aerial map, that's a mobile home that was back there, but it's since been destroyed and removed from the property as they cleaned it up. So there is still a small building up here that I can't remember if they planned to tear that down or fix it, but that's, just those two structures right there remain on the property, that mobile home has been destroyed.
And those structures are vacant?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
And they're one, I guess I could add, what they're wanting to do is put, put a new building back here in the very back of the property as a storage for their business.
And everything north of that stays R2, correct?
Correct.
Have any of those people complained about it?
There was one gentleman that had some questions before the plan commission, but he was satisfied once his questions were answered.
At Greystone, is that at Sixtieth and Madison?
Yes.
Is that the first, or is that all, just one addition right there?
Yes, that's all, you talking about Greystone Edition?
Yeah, it's, one, it's separated, right? One's on time?
No, it's just one large addition that kind of curls back around in behind there.
Any question from any member of the council? Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Davis?
Yes. Thirty-two dash fifteen is passed the Anderson City Council on its first reading.
President Davis?
Yes.
Introduce ordinance thirty-three fifteen for its first reading.
I'm gonna give that one reading?
Second. Second reading.
You're gonna give thirty-two fifteen a second reading, all these, what you meant?
What did you say?
Thirty-three, so I got...
That was yours. That was yours, okay, I'm a...
I didn't know you were muted, did you?
I look better than you do.
I'm like, where are you guys?
You got a long ways to catch up.
Madam President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty-two fifteen for a second reading.
Second.
I second that, Rodney.
Ordinance thirty-two dash fifteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number eleven forty-one, ordinance number twenty-four thirty-nine, of the City of Anderson's Code of Ordinances, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change of zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described. Hey, that's the second reading, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any question?
Madam President?
Yes.
What is this, is this gonna be like a pole barn type, or is it?
Yes, it'd be a pole barn type of construction.
Okay.
What are they storing in it?
Like that.
Louanne Mason, forty-one oh nine Columbus Avenue, here in Anderson. I have rental properties and a small business, and I plan on using this as storage for things you would use to repair my rentals. No signage, no traffic.
No lighting out on the exterior of the building?
I wouldn't think so, maybe a security light at the front, I don't...
But nothing's gonna protrude into the houses to the north of that?
No. I plan on having the door on the...
Watch yourself.
Plan on having the door on that side right here, that far side, so it would not interfere with that other side of the properties. There's privacy fence on both sides, drainage on both sides.
So that's two hundred and eighty-one foot back there, are you putting in concrete or asphalt to drive all the way back there?
No, it's gravel right now, and I plan on keeping it gravel. That's kind of an older picture, actually. Like he said, the one building in the very back, it's not even there anymore. I think there was a fire before I bought the place, and I just removed, I've been cleaning this property up for a while.
And you said there is a privacy fence between your building and the homes?
Privacy fence all the way down that?
Okay.
And all the way down the other side, several feet, yes.
There's a little fence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
Call for the question.
Question been called. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Davis?
Yes. Thirty-two dash fifteen is passed the Anderson City Council on its second reading.
Wow, really?
Oh, you're right.
All right, couldn't wait. President Davis, introduce ordinance thirty-three fifteen for its first reading.
Second.
Ordinance thirty-three dash fifteen, and ordinance amending Sections thirty-three point four zero, thirty-three point four one, and thirty-three point four three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Anderson pertaining to the Commission on Human Relations and prohibiting certain discriminatory conduct within the City of Anderson.
Good evening, Floyd Edwards Human Relations Commission, this ordinance that is being presented to you is an ordinance that would add to the, add to our protective classes, sexual orientation as well as gender identity in the ordinance. Trying to look to make sure that, that's it. Sexual orientation and gender identity.
Any council member have any question? I would like to have that explained.
Okay, what, what is that?
I just don't know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
Exactly. I think I know.
Okay, let me try to explain it, Madam President, members of the council.
Let's talk about it.
You currently have, within the Code of Ordinances, found within Chapter thirty-three, a, an ordinance, a series of ordinances which were passed by the council that prohibited certain discrimination within the City of Anderson based upon race, religion, color, sex, national origin, ancestry, or handicap, and this would be discrimination regarding the provision of housing, education, employment, or public accommodations, services, et cetera. This adds to the list of protected classes two additional categories, sexual orientation and gender identity, and would afford to members of that class the same protection that we give to those other classifications that I just mentioned, race, religion, color, sex, national origin, ancestry, and handicap. We also provide, within the current ordinance, we've had it for many years, that there's a human relations commission that can take complaints that might be filed for violations of that policy of the City of Anderson, and can act on those complaints and fashion certain remedies, if you will, requiring that the discrimination cease and desist, and can also enter, to a minor degree, some penalties or fines for violations if they are found as well.
Well, thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome, Madam President.
That does suit you, Floyd, good. Any question from the council? Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Davis?
Yes. Thirty-three dash fifteen has been given its first reading.
President Davis, introduce ordinance thirty-three fifteen for its second reading.
Second.
Ordinance thirty-three dash fifteen, and ordinance amending Sections thirty-three point four zero, thirty-three point four one, and thirty-three point four three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Anderson pertaining to the Commission on Human Relations and prohibiting certain discriminatory conduct within the City of Anderson. Any council member have a question? Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Davis?
Yes. Ordinance thirty-three dash fifteen is passed the Anderson City Council on its second reading.
President Davis?
Yes.
I ask for a suspension of the rule, and is this a zoning?
No, 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 no.
I see him raise his head over there.
I don't think I was going to ask for...
I think even Reverend Floyd and I were going to, Floyd Edwards and I were gonna...
So you don't want that?
No, just...
Right now.
Thank you.
Need to think about. Now go on to introduction of resolutions.
Madam President, I would like to introduce Resolution twenty-one fifteen for the council's consideration. Second.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifteen, a final confirmatory resolution designated an economic revitalization area for the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Legal notice was published in the Herald Bulletin under HB seven fifteen, August thirty-first, twenty fifteen. All right. Are you gonna introduce this?
I suppose I will.
Who's gonna, this, I got on my paper, Michael Friskhorn, and I know you're not Michael, so you're Tony, right?
Yes.
He was Dennis's sponsor.
And representing economic government, I'll pick Michael, so I said, in economic government.
Explain it.
This is, as the presentation during the public hearing indicated, this is a request for a ten-year step reduction, personal property tax rebate for the construction of a five-megawatt solar project owned by the Indiana Municipal Power Agency and located on the northeast corner of State Route thirty-two and Range Line Road.
That sounds exciting to me, I'm really excited about it. Anyone in the audience wish to address this? If not...
Well, I got a question.
I got a question.
Tony, will you explain to the taxpayer how it again is benefiting them on their electric bill, or what's the benefit to the taxpayer?
There's two different benefits, to the rate payer of the utility having a stable power supply where there's no increase in fuel costs, no volatility, and risk there means that over the next thirty to forty years, as long as this project lasts, that power is not gonna increase in cost, as, so inflation is not gonna impact it. For the taxpayers, as this tax abatement decreases, there will be about a sixty thousand dollar tax, or payment in lieu of taxes, to the various taxing authorities on this. Sixty thousand at a hundred percent payment, so each year, ten percent of that, it will increase ten percent until it gets to the sixty thousand.
Well, in layman's terms, to the resident out there, what, Tim, we get up here and answer this, or you know where I'm coming from, I want to know what's...
I might add this, in layman's terms, real simple, it's property that's owned by the Anderson Airport that you're not getting any revenue, the airport's getting a small crop cash rental basis income, the stays to the airport, this will be, as he said, payment in lieu of taxes that goes to the general fund.
So that money, again, it goes back to the residents in terms of putting it into the general fund, so will that affect our electric bill? I know what I'm asking.
I mean, I'm not an expert on this, councilman, but I say absolutely, I think, is beneficial to the rate payers, because as the superintendent pointed out, it provides another source of energy for our utility, stability in terms of the provision of energy, and of course, energy costs, the purchasing of that energy, that's what impacts your rates to a degree. We're always looking at what, purchase power and how much we have to purchase from MPa in terms of energy that's being produced by coal-fired generators somewhere. So this is good from that perspective in terms of the operation of the utility and also maintaining some stability as to the rates of the rate payers, and then as the superintendent also mentioned, this is going to add additional taxes into the revenues of the city, into the general fund if you wish to state that, because they will be paying on this property, they're getting a tax, but as soon as after the first year, part of that's gonna come onto the tax rolls, even though technically it's all tax-free, because it's a not-for-profit corporation, but they make what's called a payment in lieu of taxes, and all they're asking for is a incremental tax abatement over ten years, as soon as the second year, they'll start making payments on this property, on this property, into the city as personal property taxes. So that will be good for the residents as well.
I'm sure, I understand what you're saying, I just seen that gentleman behind you and others there, they want explanation, I'm a forty-year electrician, electronic technician, so I very well understand the formulas of power, so, okay.
My name is Larry Russell, ten ten Oakdale Drive. How much power, how much power will...
Oh, I'm sorry, give us your name.
He did, he did.
I got it, Larry Russell.
Five megawatts.
Five megawatts. How much, and five megawatts, that's just a number to me, how many homes with that power?
I think you guys are off track.
Typically, that would be 250 to 300 homes.
Since we're 5 megawatts, probably a little, a little bit more.
Oh, all right, yeah, you're right.
So, this, a solar site, if you, if you look at that, you, you realize it's only going to be generating during the sunny period. The actual amount of time that equivalent that it would be full output is about 17%. Okay, so roughly, we'll get about 4,500 megawatt hours per year, and that would equate to somewhere between either 5, between 500 and 750 homes, depending on how much that home consumes. Because obviously, smaller homes, you'll have a lower amount of electricity usage compared to a large home. So between 500 and 750 would be the equivalent annual power supply from there.
I was going on a energy basis, I was going on a power basis.
Okay.
So about 500, 750 homes.
Any other questions from the-
I think this gentleman wants to speak. You need to come up to the mic, sir.
I'm Bob, Calvo, 11, 32nd Range Line, and I don't understand on your taxes, why are we being taxed for something they want to put in?
No, we're giving them a tax.
You haven't really explained to me.
Yeah, you be trying to explain it.
Explain to me, Kim.
I mean, I'm not, when you say why we're being taxed, we're not, actually, what's going to happen here will be the utility, or IMPA, the Indiana Municipal Power Association, will actually be paying taxes on this personal property.
Where are they getting their money from?
The sale of electricity.
The sale of electricity and other revenues.
And who buys electricity?
Well, we buy, and the various other municipal utilities that participate. But, I mean, the fact is, you have to buy that power from somewhere. We don't generate our own power here, we, except for this. This will be actually the first time that I can think of that our local utility has actually had a generating plant. Is that correct?
No.
Am I wrong about that?
Utility does not own it.
We, we have a plant on Park Road.
Okay, the peaking plant.
The peaking plant, where we have 160 megawatts of gas, natural gas-fired generation. So there's, Indiana Municipal Power Agency was formed by state legislation, and in part of that law, we're required to pay payment in lieu of taxes on all the power plants, power generating facilities that we own. So we have to, Anderson has a 40, 50-year contract to purchase its power from IMPA. So we have to either generate that power ourselves or buy it from somewhere else.
Asking if he's going to have to pay taxes.
So we own a certain amount of power plants.
I think that's what he thinks his taxes is going to run.
And we can either own it here in Anderson, or we can own it in southern Indiana, but wherever that is, we have to pay a payment in lieu of taxes because that's what the law says we have to do. So, and you, you as a, as a customer, you're going to buy your power from somewhere. If you bought your power from Duke, they have to pay taxes, too. So their taxes that they're paying are also, would be part of your rate. So this is no different than any other electricity provider or any business. If you buy a product, if you go out and buy a car, whoever makes or sells that car has to pay taxes, and that's all part of the price of the product that you have to purchase.
Then answer me another question. Why are you limiting the number of homes?
The, the number of homes that it supplies is only a factor of how big it is. If I had an unlimited amount of land, I could put an unlimited amount of solar panels, and then I could supply an unlimited number of homes, but there's only, and I can't remember how much acreage there is there, but it's between around 35 or 40 acres. So I'm putting as many solar panels there on that land that I can fit, and then that amount will only power that 500 to 750 homes.
So the people on the west side of Anderson won't get generated, no power?
No, this will go right into Anderson's system, and I'm not sure how much load that is actually on Anderson's system in this area, but it will get consumed by the nearest 5 megawatts worth of load or homes or businesses in that area.
But the key point here is that the, what's billed to the, to the, our customers,